Do you have another pen by chance?
Good morning and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, January 28th. It's now 10:00 a.m. So we will start with a call to order and an invocation from Reverend Walter Brown from Good Hope Baptist Church. Thank you for being back here today.
All right. Good morning, y'all.
Good morning.
That is a prayer. Our Father, which art in heaven. Father, we come here today thanking you so much for allowing us to see another day. Father, we realize that everything is not going to be perfect, Father. But Father, look down on us as we go through this session, Father. Father, give us an open heart and an open mind. Dear Father, we thank you for bringing us up and down these dangerous highways. And dear Father, we can't get along without you. And dear Father, the one that's holding the office position, Father, just give them strength because we know that everything will be about them, but we know that you will work everything out. And dear Father, all we can do is just call on you and thank you for everything you do and everything you're going to do. These blessings are all other blessings. In your son's name, amen.
Amen.
Let me introduce this huge flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for religious stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning, we have Paul Denard from the District. He's a district engineer from GDOT, the Georgia Department of Transportation. There you are. Sorry, missed you. Come on up. I was like, I knew he was going to be here. Morning.
My tablet died on me at the last minute, but good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Board of Commissioners. Good morning, community of Rockdale County. Here to present on the project updates that we at the Georgia Department of Transportation are doing and all of the different investments that we have going on and activities that we do as a district office here. I am the district engineer for the Georgia Department of Transportation's District Seven, and so we cover all of six counties in metro Atlanta, but one of those counties is Rockdale. So, next slide. Wanted to acknowledge our board member and your GDOT board member, your new GDOT board member, Dana Lemon. She's the board member for the Congressional District 13, and she will be here. She's just running a little bit behind, but she will be here, and I wanted to acknowledge her today. Next slide. As I stated, I'm from the Georgia Department of Transportation. We cover transportation infrastructure projects throughout the entirety of Georgia. We have a large program where we construct, plan, program, and operate and maintain all of the roadways in the state. We're in, we sit in District Seven, and you can see that on the map. So, next slide. We will jump right into the projects, and we'll start with our active construction and maintenance projects that we have going on in Rockdale County. So, the first project, next slide, is State Route 138 at Union Church Road. That is going to construct a single-lane roundabout and install, pretty much increase and enhance the safety of that four-leg intersection on State Route 138. This project is substantially complete, so I don't know if anybody has driven through that project. I hope it's nice. They serve as gateways, they slow down drivers, they actually eliminate the right-angle collisions that you would otherwise see at the all-way stops or even traffic signals. You can only do a side swipe crash or, you know, run into the center of the island. We don't see a lot of that for our roundabouts, but they are substantial safety enhancement, and we have a lot of them in these areas. Our next slide shows State Route 138 at East Fairview Road. That roundabout is also nearing completion. It's 92% complete. We only have to install the signage and do, you know, some of the more aesthetic improvements or enhancements left, so the circle is in, and the scheduled completion should be by the end of this month or next month, and that project costs around $3.7 million. We can go to the next project, State Route 20 at West High Tower Trail. I drove through that on the way here. That project just is a little bit behind the other roundabouts. It's also installing a roundabout at what used to be a five-leg intersection, and so what we've done is we've moved one of the legs off to tie in to West High Tower, and then the roundabout will be a four-leg intersection with West High Tower and State Route 20. So, the scheduled completion for this project is spring of 2025, and that is a $4.7 million project currently. We're doing the grading. We're going to begin doing the paving work for that. You've seen, if you've been out there, you've seen a lot of the curbs that are going on on the outside. So, we are actually kind of closing in on the pivotal part where we switch over from that four-leg intersection to having a circle. So, what, and this is just to let you all know, as well as the community, we are working with the Rockdale, with Rockdale County staff on a weekend detour where we will shut down that intersection, install the circle, and then reopen it back up as a roundabout. So, we're going to be coordinating with that, coordinating that, and that should happen sometime mid-late this month. Next project is Honey Creek Road. It's one of our bridge replacement projects. It's snapping Shoals Creek. This bridge was deemed structurally deficient and in need of replacement, and so we put that into our program. The scheduled completion for that project is spring of 2026. So, right now, if you've been out there, you've seen that some of the bridge work has begun. We began setting some beams, and we will be driving piles into the ground. So, if, you know, you get, you hear a lot about noise complaints or anything like that, we're working hard to make sure that the beams and the vents are in place, and then we'll be doing some of the pavement widening right at that bridge. So, a lot of work in progress is going. That project is currently on schedule. The next project is probably our biggest project in this area, and I'm so glad that it's finally here. We are under contract, we are under construction. This project is going to replace the existing interchange with a DDI at I-20, it's State Route 138. There will be a lot of reconstruction of the ramps, there will be reconstruction of the access roads in that area, and there will just be a general widening and opening up of the interchange at I-20. And so, the scheduled completion for that project is spring of 2028, so we have a while. We're at the starting line. But as you can, if you've been out there, we have started clearing trees and clearing the area out there. We're installing our traffic control and erosion control, and utility adjustments have begun. So, that is a $79 million project. It's going to pretty much change a lot of the area, and I'm sorry, it's not a DDI, it's a SWI, it's a single-point urban interchange where, right now, there's two intersections that are, or two signalized intersections, one at each ramp that's controlling. When this project is finished, it will be one intersection controlling all of the ramps and the movements.
Can you give us an example where we might see something similar to this?
Absolutely. If you've ever been to Lenox Mall, which a lot of people have hopefully, but if you've ever been to Lenox Mall or Phipps, that is a single-point urban interchange. You come off of 400, and you come up and curve over to the left and wait your turn to move in and through that interchange. Lot of operational improvement, lot of safety enhancement. This is going to alleviate some of the queuing that we see on I-20 and alleviate a lot of the queuing that we see on some of those closely spaced intersections on 138, so.
And can you talk about, just as an example for the public, about the funding formula that you used when you put 79.5 million? Can you talk about that breakdown for funding?
Yes. So, most of our projects in the capital program are typically 80/20 split. This project was 80% federal funds, 20% state funds, and typically those projects come as a result of projects that are put in the, usually a region and the state, which in this case, it would be ARC's Transportation Improvement Plan. So, this project has been a long time coming. It is one of our federally funded projects, so it goes through our federal funding process and our federal plan development process to, what do you call, so that we can implement it.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
All right. And this is a close-up, actually, if you go to the next slide, this is a close-up of that interchange. I will have my contact information if there are any particular businesses or questions, I mean, that you receive from business, local stakeholders, different things, what's going to happen, what's it's going to look like. We can definitely reach out to us at the district. We can field or answer any questions. Actually, our area manager, Chris Robinson, he's over the construction project, has joined me today, and so he will be out, he's out there, and his staff are out there every day as we move into this very, very robust project. All right. The next project, next slide, is State Route 162 Salem Road from Flat Shoals Road to Old Salem Road. This is a widening, and it is actually a combination of two projects, both in Rockdale and Newton County. What we're doing is we're widening the four-lane section that's pretty much just south of I-20 down the Flat Shoals Parkway from four to six lanes, and we're widening the portion from Flat Shoals Road going into Newton County from two to four lanes. So, this is going to enhance capacity. There'll be sidewalks on each side of the road. There'll be a median in most, down most of the corridor dividing the highway, and there will be overall general improvements to this corridor. This is an $84 million project. It is, notice to proceed was back in the fall, so our team is finalizing schedules with our contractor, and utility clearing should start in March of this year. So, you should see a lot of action and dirt turning in March and the spring coming up.
And utilities will be buried on this project?
So, I will have to find out about the utilities on that project.
Very good.
And this is just, next slide just shows a little bit larger view of what this project is going to do. Again, if you would like a layout or if you're, if you have constituents or neighbor along the corridor, please have them reach out, and we can send them this or send them any general information that we have on the project.
And can you go over the funding formula for this one?
So, this is, this is the same situation. This is a federally funded project, 80% to 20% state/federal. All right. This one is a little bit different, and my colleague, Director Brian Kelly over here, we've worked closely on this one. This is the Courtesy Parkway Extension. This project will construct a three-lane road and a bridge over I-20, and it's actually, I love this project because there's so much congestion on 138. This is going to serve as a reliever for all of the traffic on 138 to cross I-20. The more roads you can have to spread out that traffic, it's going to be better and enhance the area. This project was let back in the fall. This is a $31.9 million project. Clearing is set to begin in the spring, and they are now finalizing the schedules on this project as well. Resurfacing. We're constantly doing resurfacing. Our resurfacing program is based on a rating-based program, so we go throughout all of our state routes, all 4,000 miles in District Seven, interstate as well as state routes, and we rate them when we go out there and assess the pavement condition. And so, State Route 20 was on the list for resurfacing. That project is nearly, it's pretty much substantially completed, and this is, we're wrapping up, and we'll have everything done in the few, in the coming months, but it's substantially completed. That project went from the Walton County line into Sigmund Road, and then we have another significant resurfacing project that we've been in partnership with Director Kelly in Rockdale County as well as the city of Conyers. This is the Dogwood Drive Access Road that's adjacent to I-20. What we're going to do is we, I mean, we've heard constant complaints and concerns and issues about the condition of that pavement, trucks, different things like that, potholes. So, what we're going to do is we're going to be doing resurfacing, milling inlay of that access road, pretty much from the Walton County line all the way to Black Lawn Road, which is pretty much a few miles east of where the DeKalb County. So, we'll be looking to cover the entire stretch of that road, and so we'll focus on Dogwood, and then in later, if there's same issues on the other side, Iris, we will come, be back around to present about that at a later date.
Can you go over that location when you said from Walton to Newton?
So, so, and I'm sorry, I'm not Walton. This is from the Newton County line on the Dogwood Drive all the way to essentially the DeKalb County.
So, would that be in front of our commercial district, shopping district?
Yes. So, every single area between, what we're, we're going to do is we're going to be covering Dogwood Drive within the limits of I-20. So, if you notice, there'll be, Dogwood Drive will, you know, travel alongside of the interstate right away, and that's actually inside of the interstate right away. And then at those interchanges, it'll come out and become more of a county road or a city street, depending on where it is. We'll be focused on those areas that are within the interstate.
So, primarily like BJ's, Courtesy Ford, all the shopping areas, movie theater, all that?
Yeah, so if it's.
That'll be, make a lot of people happy?
Yeah. It's, it's going to address a lot of, lot of complaints and concerns that we've received.
Very good.
All right. Let's get into some of the projects in the design and pre-construction phase. We have State Route 138 at Dow Mill Road, Miller Bottom Road. We're going to be putting in a roundabout at this location. I know that there's a traffic signal there, but we've still seen a significant crash history with angle collisions and high speeds and different things like that. So, in similar fashion to some of the other roundabouts that we've had on 138 and 20, we're going to be installing a roundabout there. This project is scheduled to let in summer of 2027. We're just beginning the design on this project, so we have a bit of a ways to go, and we will be acquiring some property with that as well, so that's why it's a little bit further, further out. Our next project is another project that's in partnership with the county and the city. This is the Rockdale River Trail Extension from South River Trail to Johnson Park. This is an enhancement project that would construct a multi-use trail. It's scheduled let right now, it's fall of 2028, and it is estimated at about $5.5 million. Next project. And then we have some bridge preservation, so this is the step that's just short of the replacement, when we do all, we do biannual inspections of our bridges, and so we identified the bridge of 138, ironically enough, just north of our large interchange project, to be in need of some preservation. So, what we'll do is we'll either go out there, do some fixes, do some, you know, address concrete issues or steel issues with column or bridge joints, different things like that. That will be letting in the spring of 2027. So, we're going to try to get everything done, hopefully, and be out of the way come 2028. And then the next slide, I just wanted to cover briefly that this is a partnership, and one of the things that we reach out here at the district and make sure is just the preventative maintenance. We have a robust maintenance program where we cover a lot of the state highways, and, and I just want aesthetics, pavement condition, visible stripes, and then congestion, addressing those things are some of those things that we try to issue or address in our maintenance program. Next slide. For your, these are the key areas that we, and key programs that we have in regards to contracts, in regards to our maintenance contracts on our state routes, and this is very, we get a lot of concerns, a lot of issues, complaints, hey, there's trash on our roadway, hey, it's someone come and cut down these, you know, these weeds and shrubs. We are on a 30-day cycle, okay, with our contractor, so we were, we are out there every 30 days on the interstate and every 45 days on the regular state route arterials. And so, that is the cadence, and we hold our contractor accountable to making sure in many jurisdictions, if the jurisdiction says, hey, that's not enough, we need more, or there's a CID, a Community Improvement District, they are absolutely able to have supplemental and contract with, enter into contract with the same contractor we have to do supplemental runs and supplemental mowing and supplemental cycles. So, we have that. We have our contracting, our regular contracting activities that include things like sound wall repair, fencing, PCC slab repairs. We cover graffiti and sign repair, bridge repair. We also invest a lot into guard rail repair, and so we have a robust program where we try to get, address those on a very quick and turn, quick basis so that we can get our guard rail and the safety of our roadways addressed. And then, of course, we, as we just got out of two weeks' worth of emergency repair with winter, or emergency work with winter weather, snow and ice details and so forth like that. So, we stay in contact with our local jurisdictions and our emergency management folks to make sure that our roadways are clear and covered during those areas, and so that's one of the activities that we do out of the district office. And so, with that, next slide, that is the, that is all of the projects and updates in, in Rockdale County. I'm certainly open to question. Just wanted to acknowledge our GDOT board member, Ms. Dana Lemon.
Good morning.
And so, she, she is very hardworking all over the place, you know, from South Platon and Henry all the way up to here, so I'm open to any questions.
Go ahead. Okay, so, I've been talking for several years about wildflowers down the interstate. What do we have to do to make that happen?
Yeah, so we have a wildflower program that you can go on our website. Usually, the staff at the city will go in on our website, they'll apply. We have that. Actually, there's a committee or a group at our, the Office of Maintenance within the GDOT Downtown Office, and they sort throughout all of those applications for the wildflower program, and if there's available funding, they go out yearly, usually it's on a yearly basis, and they address key areas of the interstate. So, that's something that you can find information on our website.
Thank you.
I had a question. Can you talk about the, the striping of the roads and how often that's done?
Yes. So, usually, striping is done with the resurfacing. So, in addition to assessing the pavement of the roadway, we assess the striping, so when we do a resurfacing project, that striping is assessed. We also have a striping program where we go out and we'll do night inspections, assess the retroreflectivity of the pavement, of the pavement markings, and then we will put on an annual basis, okay, we need to cover this area, we need to cover this route in similar fashion. So, we do have striping projects. They don't end up getting programmed because we have a routine maintenance program that addresses those. If there are trouble spots, please let our office know.
Okay. We will definitely do that. And then can you address some of the interstate signage for Conyers? I know the, I think it's the signs that say Conyers Historic District, both the eastbound and westbound sign need to be replaced?
Okay. If there are specific interstate interchange or even, you know, signage that needs to be replaced, we also go out there and assess, and we replace those. If the, we coordinate with the local jurisdiction if there's specific signs that need to be replaced, but we do those on a case-by-case basis as well.
Very good. We'll let you, we'll send an email for that then.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Absolutely. At this time, if you have a yellow card and are signed up to speak, we would love to have public comments. All right. Very good. We will first hear from Nocenti Uhidi. You're going to have to help me, I'm sorry. Uhidi? Okay, help me.
My name is Nocenti Uhuti.
Okay. I'll get it right next time.
I have a question. First of all, thank you and congratulations. I'm glad to see y'all.
Thank you.
I was, we had a workshop on the budget, and in the budget, there was $100,000, I think I sent you guys a note about it. There was $100,000 that was established for stormwater management to do reviews on future projects that are coming. My question is, how was it funded? Who is responsible? What does it entail? What does that review entail? I'm pretty sure it has to do with where to put stormwater facility on new projects.
Madam Chair, I apologize, I hate to interrupt you, I really do, but the viewers at home cannot hear you. Could you pull the microphone down? It'll come right down. Thank you so much.
Is that short, Joe?
Yes, I know. I'm the same.
No problem. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I want to find out how it's funded. Was it tax dollars? And if possible, can any of that money be redirected towards what's happening with storm and water right now? I'm concerned about seniors. I am one, and if stuff is floating past our house, some of our houses are sinking, and it doesn't, we can't repair the foundation of the facilities or the residence until the stormwater equipment is updated, cleaned out, and water flows. So, we were wondering if there's any way, I did read on the budget that you do have the authority to move money, so I'm asking you to move some. Can you move some money over to storming waters so that they can do current work? I know we got to do reviews, and that's not an argument at all, but it's kind of, it doesn't feel good to think that you took some money and fixed new stuff that's not even here yet, and you're not taking care of us, and we've been paying on house notes here for many, many years. So, can you fix that? Thank you.
Thank you. And I will connect you with a stormwater director. Okay. Thank you. Lee Wright?
Good morning, Madam Chairman.
Good morning.
Commissioners.
Good morning.
Looks like I picked the best day to come to the meeting today because DOT is here.
That's right.
And my concern, and one of my pet peeves is, when I get on I-20 heading west, when I get about to West Avenue, I'm looking to the right, and I ran this by the city. Also, could there possibly be some type of wall put up? Because when you're heading west on I-20 and you're looking over to the right-hand side and you see all this trucking mess and everything, and it starts about just beyond Dogwood to Sigmund Road, and it's just not a good look for Rockdale County. Because you see, it's just not, it does, it just. Because you see, it's just not, it just, it just doesn't look appea- appealing. And if I was somebody passing through Rockdale County and I'm looking around and I might wanna move here and I look over to my right-hand side on I-20 and I see all this, whatever you wanna call it, trucking places, uh, abandoned stuff, then when you, when you get down to Siglin Road, just about where Siglin Mills is, you're looking over there, if there's stuff too, it just doesn't look good. So could somebody look into maybe putting up a wall there? Now, the other side heading back towards Conyers doesn't look as bad, even though there's a lot of car lots there, which is business. But just to look over on the right-hand side heading towards Atlanta and you're seeing all this, whatever you wanna call it, it's just not a good look. And the best thing about G-DOT coming into Rockdale County is, uh, we're gonna pack our patience because the roads do need improving. One thirty-eight is a mess. Have you ever been on one thirty-eight? Salem Road is the same way, traffic, traffic, traffic. But I'm glad to see G-DOT is finally getting on this end of the county or the state and doing some work. But my main thing is I-20 West, and you could probably say it starts about where the lottery, now, where the lottery sign is. No, that's just about the county line. It more or less starts about where those auto repair places just beyond BioLab. And when you look to the right-hand side, it's not a good look for the county. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Corliss Turner.
Good morning, Commissioner Williams and Smith and Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Uh, I come before you this morning as Corliss Turner as a resident, um, of Rockdale County. So I'm not speaking for anyone but me, but, uh, I think the citizens have the same concern. It should be pretty obvious across the nation that the citizens are tired of what has been happened with previous administrations. Uh, that's across the nation. And so they, if you look at the voting and see how things change, that's a reflection on it. And we voted because of what the candidates campaigned on. Here in Rockdale is what I can speak about. Um, you all are aware, Commissioner Smith and, uh, Chair, you're aware of everything that's going on in Rockdale because you've been in a, you've gotten the same email that I've received. Um, you're aware of the wasteful spending, uh, like having five hundred ninety-seven cars with little less than eleven hundred employees. You've seen the wasteful travel expenses going to Peachtree City for a retreat, spending eighteen thousand dollars when we have a one point five million dollar, um, event center. The excessive employee raises, the lawsuits, um, that citizens weren't aware of. Our insurance have went up substantially. So we, you know, you, we, we talked to you all and told you all these things in several meetings. And we look to you all to resolve them and we expect your promises to be fulfilled with action. There's things that, Madam Chair, you said that you could do immediately. And one was the Ethics Board. I know when you were here before, you did the Ethics Board and you modeled, you all, Rockdale modeled after DeKalb County, but it was unconstitutional. DeKalb County went and fixed theirs and you told us that this is what you were gonna do and one of the things you can do immediately. Another one was the appointing members to the Water Authority. It is a legislative act and you can't just ignore a legislative act. You have to fulfill that. That's a law since nineteen ninety-five. If you don't wanna do that, do the proper thing because we wanna be respectful and do things decent in and order in Rockdale County. And you're aware that you would have to go back to the General Assembly. Also, um, so much on my mind and I rushed in here. But you're, you're also aware of the equipment in our DOT that we are paying for, uh, monthly since February last year, where Director Brian Kelly, uh, his review said that he ordered this equipment without having anyone to be able to operate it. We're in a five-year lease, but I'll put the rest in online.
Okay, thank you. And we are working on many of those things and you'll see that coming forward in the near future. At this time, we have approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Six, we have approval of the minutes from January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
No, ma'am.
All in favor, say aye.
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 The motion carries. Item number seven, at this time, we don't have any unfinished business. So we'll move to item number eight, which is a consent agenda and we don't have anything for that. So we'll move to the number nine, which is the regular agenda.
So item twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four is with the Association County Commissioners of Georgia, the Civic Affairs Foundation Incorporated through Talent Management Department. This is for the General County, Georgia Internship Program. It's the GCIP for Classification Management Systems, interned to work directly with the Compensation and Classification Information Systems Division. The amount is three thousand two hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents with a four hundred dollar cost share. This is a grant. The term is May first, twenty twenty-five through September first, twenty twenty-five. This is a budgeted item and it's through the general fund. And just as a reminder, this morning, we will be going through each item to discuss and then vote.
All right. So I move to approve this contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none?
I might just make a comment that my son, um, participated in this program years ago when he was in college. And he still has fond memories of it. He worked with the Tax Commissioner's Office and it was a really good opportunity for him.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries.
Okay, the next item is twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five with Kaiser Permanente through the Talent Management Department for Biometric Screenings and Wellness Activities. This is funded through Kaiser's Wellness Funds allocated for Rockdale County to support the health of employees. This is at no cost to employees. The term is January first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this no-cost-to-employee contract as presented.
Duly noted, Commissioners.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions?
No.
I, I did have a question. It looked to me when I was going through all the information that some of those, um, opportunities are only for those people who have Kaiser as their employees, who have Kaiser as their health provider. But other things are for all employees? Is that, did I read that right?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Commissioners. Yes, the programs, the webinars, the classes, fitness classes, cooking classes, those things will be available to all employees. Um, even the registration site for the portal, they'll be able to track their success. The items, um, that pertain to them receiving the wellness credit will be for the Kaiser employees. But the programs that they host with the wellness funds are available to all Rockdale County employees. Thank you. You're welcome.
And that's the link available on the Workforce ADP site?
It is available on our Workforce ADP site, but it'll also be available on our SharePoint. And we also send it out to all of the employees, making sure that they're aware of the program. So exciting opportunity for our employees.
I did find that and there's a lot of classes.
A lot of classes. Anybody that likes to walk and cook, webinars, exercising, yoga, definitely wanna stay fit, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries.
Okay, next item is twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six through A&amp;S Services LLC, Georgia, through the Emergency Management Agency Department. This is the Maintenance Plan for Weather Sirens. The amount is one hundred twenty-two thousand, one hundred twenty-seven dollars and eighty cents. This is for a five-year cost. The term is September first, twenty twenty-four through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine. This is for the purchase and installation of equipment. That was two hundred seventeen thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. This is a budgeted item and is through the general fund. Year one is twenty-five thousand dollars. Years two through five will be twenty-four thousand, two hundred eighty-one dollars and seventy cents per year.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
Um, I just wanna note that it does decrease seven hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty cents after the second year, correct?
That is correct.
All right. I, um, Madam Chair, I second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item twenty twenty-five, twenty, dash twenty-seven.
Item twenty-seven is with Motorola Solutions through the Emergency Management Office. This is for the twenty twenty-five Motorola Radio Subscriber Service Agreement for the Diagnostic X-Box Extended Warranty Maintenance Renewal. This is change order number four to contract twenty twenty dash one forty-six. It's an increase of three thousand, one hundred forty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. It's a new contract cost of eighty-one thousand, seven hundred eleven dollars and twenty-two cents per year. Previously, that was at seventy-eight thousand, five hundred sixty-eight dollars and forty cents per year. The term is January first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. This is a renewal, a budgeted item, and is funded through the Emergency nine-one-one Tower Fund.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 The motion carries. Item twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight.
Item twenty-eight is with Dr. Larry Owens, Doing Business as Bethel Behavioral Health LLC, through the Superior Court Resource Court Division for Individual Counseling and Group Facilitation for the Prime Solutions Curriculum for the MRT Moral Recognition Therapy for the MRT Trauma and Relapse Prevention, up to two hundred and fifty dollars per session, one year, with option to renew two additional one-year periods. This is a new contract. This is grant-funded and has no match.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? I do have a question for clarification. Is this through one of the accountability courts? This program?
It's the Resource Court, which is an accountability court.
And which judge is that with?
That is Judge Woods, I think.
Okay.
Judge Mumford had it before.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that help. Um, then all in favor, say aye.
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 All right. The motion carries.
I might mention that Resource Court is, is named that instead of Mental Health Court.
Oh, okay. Very good.
That's right.
Thank you. All right, we have item twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine.
Item twenty-nine is with Katz Cradles Productions Incorporated through the Parks and Recreation Department for a location release for the use of Costly Mill Park for filming his and hers. The program, this is for a signature only.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Is, is there any revenue involved in that? Typically, when we have people use our parks for?
All right, we see Director Edman coming up.
Good morning. Madam Commissioners, Madam Chair. So this is just a location release stating that they returned the park back to us the way they found it.
Oh, okay.
We sent the, uh, this was filmed in twenty twenty-four. So we did receive revenue for this film and this is just a release to say that they're off the property and everything was left as they found it.
I see.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good.
So we had a motion and a second?
Yes. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Item twenty twenty-five dash thirty.
Item thirty is a resolution of the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners requesting the introduction of local legislation authorizing the exercise of redevelopment powers.
All right. And we do have the Development Authority Chair here today, if you have any questions. It's okay.
So who is here?
Um, Dr. Steve Boyle is here. He's the Chair for the Development Authority, if you have any questions regarding the redevelopment powers.
I, I think I would like to hear from the Development Authority.
Okay.
About the purpose of this, um, legislation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, couple of, well, uh, once I took over as Chair, we decided to have sort of, uh, sessions of, uh, retreat where we try and look at the future and, uh, what our relevance would be going forward. Uh, we're running out of land in Rockdale County and so new development is not gonna be as, uh, common as it is right now. In fact, it's already slowing down. So we were looking at what, uh, what might come our way that we could help with in terms of our powers. And one of the things that came up was redevelopment of properties that, um, are not being utilized, not for whatever reason. And there is an interest in doing something that would cost a significant amount of money but would raise the taxes to the county ultimately. So, uh, that's called a redevelopment power. And the typical use of that is like a TAD, if you're familiar with the city's use of that with the, uh, uh, Salem Gate Shopping Center. We don't have that tool on our toolbox right now. And, uh, so we, uh, looked into it and it turns out that it does require our legislators to give us that authority. Uh, so that was the process by which we came to this request.
Very good. And we have met with our legislative delegation and discussed this. Can you clarify for the public? I think there's been some concern just because of timing. This is something that was asked last year and just never was handled? Is that the case?
Two years ago, we started this discussion. We tried to get something done in the legislature that didn't, uh, that, for whatever reason, the communication wasn't adequate and we didn't get our request done. Uh, and that was a year ago. So now we've gone back with further clarity, clarity and information and would like to try and get this. Uh, but it, it's a, a, a long-term concept of how we can best help with future development in the county.
Okay. And do you have a project in mind at this time?
None, none at, at this time. We really haven't, uh, gotten, uh, serious about looking into such projects until we know we have the authority to, to give some value.
And can you clarify for the public, this doesn't have anything to do with the BioLab, uh, property where the warehouse was, correct?
No, nothing at all.
Okay.
Unrelated.
Can you also talk about the Development Authority and its position and how they work with new companies coming into the community that have a project that's typically very expensive, several million dollars, and how the Development Authority helps them with bonds?
Yes, our, our main tool is to provide a company or, uh, industry that wants to come here with a, uh, a tax abatement. And the way we do that is that we buy their property, basically. It's sort of a phantom sale and we use phantom bonds to do that. But that's the way the state of Georgia has set up the program. As the owner of the property, our Development Authority is a non-taxable entity. And so, uh, we can then do what's called a payment in lieu of taxes. And the entity involved will pay a certain proportion of the taxes each year as, say, ten percent the first year and twenty the second, up to a hundred percent. And as, as they get to the point where they're paying full taxes, then we give them their product, their property back and, and, uh, then they go on the full tax roll. So that's, that's the state of Georgia's technique for giving us, uh, the power to abate taxes.
And also because in the, in the state of Georgia, it's pretty competitive when it comes to economic development. Every community has different opportunities to, um, draw companies to the area. So how do you feel like it's impacted Rockdale County to be able to have that tool?
It's, it's been critical. Uh, we, as, as some may know, we have a very high, uh, tax rate in our county. And in order to be competitive with other counties or other states, uh, this capability is very important. And it's been successful. We've gotten a number of projects that we just would not have been able to attract without the ability to give the industry involved some relief with taxes, at least early on in their, uh, project. So it's, it's an extremely important, uh, element for us to attract business. And, and it's been very successful. We've, we've got a, a couple of projects that really can't talk much about but are gonna really improve our percentage of commercial tax versus residential tax, which is one of our goals, to try and get that number a little more, uh, positive.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just if, if we could take a minute, um, to hear from Roger Murray, if you could talk to us a little bit about how bonds are used in the state of Georgia and that what our development? and that, what our Development Authority does. Is it like what other development authorities do across the state?
Yes, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Um, yes, as the Chair of the Authority, Dr. Boyle explains, the, the, the Development Authority really issues two types of bonds. The first type, we call Bonds Retitled or Phantom Bond Deals, and that's really one where the sole purpose of the transaction is to offer an ad valorem property tax abatement. Um, because what happens, as he explained briefly, the company transfers the land to the Development Authority, and, um, the Development Authority issues a bond, and the company buys the bond, right? Um, and then the second transaction, type of transaction the Development Authority does, is we call it a real bond issue, and that's when bonds are sold to the investing public and funds are raised and money is used to construct a project. And, um, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but I would say for probably every ten phantom bond deals we do, the Development Authority does sort of one actual bond deal, and that's because the federal tax laws limit the types of projects that can be funded, um, to, um, to, you know, basically nowadays it's nonprofit. There's some small manufacturing facilities and some other things. So, yeah, the, the, the stuff that we're doing that the Development Authority does is typical. It's, it does, you know, every city and county throughout the state does it. Um, I've been talking, I've been working with the Development Authority in the county for thirty-plus years, and we've been talking about getting redevelopment powers here for years and years and years. And, and so, uh, it's, it's a tool. It's a great economic development tool for the community to have. Um, almost all of my clients have it. Uh, there's no downside to getting the powers. It, there's no new taxes associated with this tool. Uh, it's just simply taking an area that's ripe for development or redevelopment, as Dr. Boyle explained, and saying, okay, we really need to jumpstart this development. And so, you take the, you basically, um, the county would issue the bonds in this instance. The bond proceeds are, are, you know, received by the county, given to the developer. The, the infrastructure's put in, and the taxes generated in the future from the growth of that area are used to repay the bonds. So, there's no, so the rest of the community is not supporting that, right? So, you're basically saying, okay, let's draw a little line around this, this allocation, tax allocation district, and let's have that area leverage their future taxes to finance these improvements. So, there's really no downside in, in, in getting these redevelopment powers from the taxpayer's perspective. Actually, it's upside because then they don't have to, you know, fund prospective growth, right? Um, so, so again, I've been advocating this for, for years and years, and I'm delighted to see that we're now in a position to recommend, make the recommendation to the Legislative Council. Hopefully, that they will take that, um, and run with it, and then so the next step is they, they adopt a, a law. We call it a local law because it only applies locally to this jurisdiction that would give you the redevelopment powers. Well, that's the first step. Then the second step is the voters have to approve it. So, I know the community's very active here, and they want to know what's going on, and they want input. So, uh, assuming that we get the, the law, um, introduced, passed, signed by the Governor, then the voters will have the opportunity, you know, to vote yes or no whether or not you can use those powers. And then, once you have the, you know, the arrow in your quiver, you can decide whether or not, you know, you want to do that. And again, just to be clear, before, before you can do anything, create a TAD, a Tax Allocation District, or issue bonds, or do anything, you have to have a plan that's developed that shows that it's feasible. That plan has to be presented at a public hearing, um, after, after notice is given to the public. The public has the opportunity to, to provide input, and then after the public hearing, then there's an additional notice and an approval. So, there's tons of community input before, you know, before anything is done. So, uh, I mean, again, I, th- this is a tool y'all should have. Taxpayers are protected and have tons of opportunities for input, so.
All right. So, let me just make sure that I clarify this. So, what we're asking for today is a vote for the redevelopment powers. The redevelopment powers don't have anything necessarily to do with us as a county getting more bonds because we're bonded at the maximum. We've, we've reached as, as much use of bonds as we have for the current project. This is more redevelopment projects, I mean, powers, so that the Development Authority has a tool, and they can work with private businesses and offer the phantom bonds at lower...
No. This really, this really doesn't, this is separate from, from the phantom bonds and tax abatement. Um, and so, uh, so let me clarify. So, all you're doing to, so in order to introduce local legislation, the way the General Assembly works is that local legislation, it applies just to the community, like I said, is, is introduced by the local delegation, right? So, it's introduced by the local delegation, this area that goes up to the General Assembly. And their rule is before we're going to introduce local legislation, we want to know that you all unanimously support it, because they don't want to run with a local. So, this basically, we're just checking the box of the local delegation and asking them to do it. Um, that, that's the only thing we're doing today. And then, again, hopefully, they'll introduce the legislation. It'll get adopted. The Governor will sign it. Then we'll have the vote. Then, then we'll have a tool to consider using in the future. Um, and, and honestly, the way it would probably work is the county would probably issue the tax allocation bonds or, or leverage, use the money. It's really the, the Development Authority would use it to help you, work with you to, you know, for the, for the economic development project. But ultimately, it's the county's bond issue, but it's a limited obligation of the county payable solely from the tax increment within that jurisdiction. So, that's the beauty of this, of this program, is you're not leveraging the county's general credit. You're only leveraging the potential increases in taxes in that area. And if, and if the project fails, then it's a risk the bondholders take. This is a different type of bond than the PFA bond where the full faith credit and the taxing powers of the county were behind that, and, you know, you're gonna pay that no matter what. These TAD bonds are, are typically sold to sophisticated investors, and they understand if the development doesn't go, there's not gonna be tax increment, and that, even if it defaulted, it wouldn't hit the county's credit rating because it's a limited obligation payable solely from those, from that increment.
So, different from the PFA, there would be no responsibility for the taxpayers of the redevelopment. And, and our TAD is the one that was used over for Academy Sports and Floor and Decor, that shopping area that was redeveloped?
For the city?
For the city.
Yeah, yeah, the city, that's correct. The city used the tax, that's right, a tax increment financing, tax allocation bond, whatever you want to call it, in order to sort of jumpstart that. They use that to, to, to put some capital in the project and...
And get rid of a blighted area.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good.
Anything else?
No.
All right, good to see y'all. I'm gonna head right there.
Thank you. All right.
So, I move to approve this resolution as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Item 2025-31.
Item 31 is a resolution adopting a moratorium on the establishment of certain uses within the unincorporated Rockdale County, Georgia, for a period of one hundred and twenty days to provide for exceptions, to establish an effective date, and for other purposes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this resolution as presented, and also note, this is something that we said on our campaign trail that we would do.
We definitely did, and I'm very excited about this.
I second the motion.
Thank you. So, I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Item 2025-32.
Item 32 is a resolution of the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners for the meeting time change.
So, I move to approve the resolution as presented, but which meeting are we talking about?
So, this would be on Tuesday, February the 11th, moving the time from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
I knew that, but I wanted to make sure.
Oh, okay, sure.
I second the motion, Madam Chair.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. We move to board comment. Commissioner Williams?
Oh, you're starting with me?
Aye.
Okay. Just a reminder, I had talked, um, the last time we met, which has been several weeks, about the Walk With Me Virtual Dementia Simulation, which will be held this Thursday, the January 30th at 10:00 a.m. at the retreat at Conyers on Renaissance Drive, and, um, it's for, it's for anyone in the community who's, who may be a caregiver of someone living with dementia or, um, you just want more information about it. I think every, I, I've mentioned before, I think everybody knows somebody who, um, is living with dementia or has lived with dementia. Um, so again, that is, uh, this Thursday, January 30th at 10:30 a.m. at the retreat. Um, and the other comment I had was, we did meet with our state legislation, legislative delegation yesterday down at the Capitol, um, and that was a, a good meeting in terms of discussing specifically the resolution that we passed this morning, um, for those economic development powers. And they, um, seemed to be in agreement that, uh, that they would introduce this legislation. I think this is a good step forward. Um, I'm glad that, uh, Roger emphasized that there is no risk to taxpayers, there is no cost to taxpayers. It is simply, um, for those involved in that particular area of redevelopment. Um, I think those are my comments today.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this month, we had, um, participated in the NAACP MLK Breakfast, which was great, and, um, the Rockdale County High School Jazz Band did an excellent job, um, with that. And I also want to thank our EMA Director in Transportation for how you guys handled our, um, storm this past, uh, couple of weeks. We were informed, the streets were great, and we were able to come back to work, which was great, in a timely fashion. So, I appreciate the efforts that you guys did with that. And, um, that is it. I will leave you with this, though. Ideas are yesterday. Execution is today, and excellence will see you into tomorrow. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Very nice. I agree with those comments. Um, I just wanted to mention that it has been great working and getting settled in at the county, but I've really enjoyed working with the city and the school board and the superintendent, the Development Authority, um, the Conyers Rockdale Economic Development Council. It's really given me even more hope for our community to see all the excitement from the citizens and the engagement, and so I really applaud the people of Rockdale County for their, um, su- support of this administration, but also their engagement. That's very, very important for our future success, and, and as a team, we definitely want to serve at the highest level, so we appreciate, uh, the feedback. And, um, I hope to see you Thursday, January 30th. That sounds like a great event at the retreat.
Unfortunately, I have to take my husband to an appointment.
Oh, well, I'll represent you well then, so...
Thank you.
All right. Um, with that being said, Madam Clerk, uh, do we have a need for executive session?
Yes, we do, but I believe Chief Sanders had something to add this morning before we go into executive session.
So, I was gonna ask Executive Director Holmes to come up and talk about the vacancy control that goes into effect on February 1st and clarify that. We had a lot of questions.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, definitely wanted to provide an update. So, we introduced vacancy control last year in June of 2024. Um, it was intended to go through the end of the year. Um, at this point, we are implementing an updated version of vacancy control, which will take place on February 1st, and some of the updates wanted to point out that it does require a thorough review with the department heads to determine the immediate business needs for the, um, position, just to ensure that we continue to provide essential services to the citizens of Rockdale County. It also requires for the department heads to re, to document, um, the immediate need impact for the position, with the position, without the position, and how that would impact the department and the services to the county. The other thing that's gonna be updated and that's new is that in addition to myself signing the form, as well as the CFO, the Chair for the Board of Commissioners will also sign all forms for requisitions with the postings for, um, new positions for Rockdale County. So, the items that you see on the website right now will be reviewed. We'll be sitting down with all the department heads, looking at those, looking at those individual postings. I also want to note that, um, public safety is not included in vacancy control. So, I know sometimes people will ask about the Sheriff's Office postings and those things, but those are not subject to vacancy control, so.
All right. And while we have you here, can you also talk about the new policy for travel and, um, training?
Yes. So, one of the things that we also implemented, we do submit travel requests, and we submit that via our original budget, but we've also implemented a new form that will require all of the department heads, not just the directors or, um, elected officials, but every one of your department will be required to submit documentation and justification in terms of the need for the training, if it's in a budgeted item, also what impact it's gonna make to the county, so being able to come back and share that information with the citizens and the employees of Rockdale County. So, that'll be a new form that'll be introduced as well as documentation for the training as well as travel.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, yes, we do have a need to enter into executive session today for discussing the purposes of personnel. So, if we could get a vote to enter into executive session.
I move to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes, and at this time, I need a motion for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
I second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Have a great day, and thank you for attending today's meeting.